Virtual Planning Commission of February second, two thousand and twenty one. The current Virtual Planning Commission meeting format has been undertaken by the city of Daly City in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The Planning Commission thanks the public for its participation in the virtual meeting format. It is our intention that the commission receive any and all comments that you may wish to make for the land use proposals being considered tonight. If you would like to comment, please do so as soon as possible on the open gov website you are now logged into. And the Planning Division staff will read the comments you have submitted after each item. Please make sure that your comment is entered for the correct item on which you desire to offer comment. Also, after each item, there will be a pause to ensure that the commission has ample time to receive any comments communicated through the open gov website. Thank you. And now we'd like to have a roll call.
Let's pledge to the flag, Your Honor.
Oh, I'm sorry, the flag is missing. Let us pledge to the flag. Everyone, Ray, you'd like to start?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation under God.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And now I'd like to make a motion to move to move the reorganization of the planning commissioners to the end of our meeting.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. So we'll do that. And so now let's move to the approval of minutes. We'd like to have the approval of a minutes of November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes. And so now I'd like to move forward on item one. Michael, you will be discussing that. May I pass this on to you?
So thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna share my screen. Can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. This is an application to essentially reinstall or renew any previously existing automotive repair use at seventy-three thirty-eight A Mission Street. The use permit is twelve twenty fourteen eight seventeen. And the proposal is to allow, again, the reinitiation of what was previously an auto repair garage at the existing location. The reason why the use permit is before the planning commission tonight is because more than six months has lapsed since the use has been undertaken and a use permit is required by the zoning ordinance. And so the applicant was required to apply for a new use permit. The proposed user of the space is actually unknown at this time. There's an automotive sound repair business right next door to the north that may occupy the spot, but it's not guaranteed that they're taking it. But the property owner wants to secure the use permit prior to or while they market the property so that it's permits are ready to go. The proposed garage would be located inside the existing thirty-four hundred square foot building. The use utilizes existing service space. Already there, and we have a photo of that coming up. Hours of operation would be seven AM until seven PM, Monday through Saturday. Again, primarily conducting auto body repair, vehicle modifications. The site provides actually quite a bit of parking at the rear. And with right in, right out access to Mission Street, there are no exterior modifications to the building proposed. So there's no design review or anything like that required. Here's the site location. It's located on the west side of Mission Street, just south of Vale and Mission. Here's a Google Street View image of the property. And actually, the seventy-three thirty-eight is actually located behind this jujitsu studio. We have some other pictures too. So you have to go down this alley to actually access it. And this is the auto auto sound performance that may occupy the may occupy the space. Here's that driveway that I described. And here to the left is the seventy-three thirty-eight A Mission Street use. And this is the parking area. It's a pretty basic site plan, but this is kind of communicates what it what it is. Here's a floor plan showing the existing garage. And the service space, this space is currently completely empty. The Planning Division and Fire Department visited the site about a week ago and took some pictures and developed conditions of approval based on site conditions we saw. But this is essentially what the inside looks like. Again, automotive repair has occurred here for many years. They just elapsed the use permit, and so a new one's required. Here's the site exterior. There are a number of vehicles associated with both the retail and automotive repair uses, as well as there are two residential units above the auto sound performance business that also park in this area. Alto, there are, I believe, thirty-five parking spaces. There's actually quite a bit of parking back here, especially if tandem parking is implemented, which can occur as part of an automotive repair use because the automotive repair people have the keys to the vehicles. So the fire department didn't seem to have any sort of an issue with that. There's a lot of words here. I'll just tell you what they say briefly. Again, automotive repairs occurred here before, so we see no reason not to allow a continuation of that use. There are no code enforcement actions specifically related to seventy-three thirty-eight A Mission Street, although auto sound performance has had some complaints related to parking vehicles in Mission Street and feeding the meters so that they could, I guess, maybe have better access to the cars. Really, those cars need to be behind the behind the building. Auto sound performance is not the applicant here, just to clarify, but it is on the same property. And so that's why the staff is bringing up that the the property management and ownership needs to let tenants know that feeding meters is not allowed. And that the city will take such offenses so that there's no lack of clarity there. There's also been some double parking that's occurred, and that continues to be an issue, not only with this business, but others in Mission Street. It's just sort of a tight area to try and conduct automotive repair. It does happen with offloading vehicles. Of course, we discourage that. Not not a safe condition to do, but sometimes needs to happen when, you know, a car's, you know, needs to be brought in a flatbed. That does happen. So there's that. And then parking disabled vehicles in the street is also not allowed. So we do have conditions of approval related to both of these issues. And the planning commissioners were able to see that in the conditions. We have accounted for both of those or these types of issues. And these are the pretty much standard conditions of approval we issue for automotive repair on Mission Street or Geneva Avenue for that matter. Proposals exempt from SEQA. We are recommending that the planning commission advance approval of the use permit to the city council, subject to the conditions of approval that are identified in the staff report. The applicant is present. If the planning commissioners have any questions for her, she'd be happy to answer any any questions you have related to the proposal.
Madam Chairman, can I ask you a question?
Ask me a question or you ask Melanie a question?
Well, whoever wants to answer this doesn't matter.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I would like to know how many square meters do you have currently? And how much more square meters will be added to the facility?
Oh, I can answer that. It's existing three thousand four hundred and eighty square feet.
And how many will be added to the facility?
But you know, there's no, there's no proposal to add any square feet beyond what was previously occurring at the site. There's no addition to the building proposed.
Because it says expansion. So when you say expansion, meaning hmm, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Put dates, something like that.
So the initial concept was that the automotive sound business next door would be expanding into this space. But as the application was processed, it was made clear to us that that was not necessarily the case, that there was not a lease signed for that. So that's why we we you see the word expansion. The building is not physically proposed for expansion.
It used to be owned by, I understand, by the PAR body, auto body. Now what will be the name? Would you know?
Well, we don't know the tenant that's proposed to take it yet. It's
You said it's Milani, Milani Hildibrand. Is she is she here?
She, her representative is here, yes.
I Kimberly Duncan. I'm the property manager.
There's so many auto body shop here in the mission. So I'd like to know what is the use of expansion here? When, you know, it is more to me, not the development, but because this is just some sort of additional expansion for second hand or repair shop. So I don't think that this is really for growth and development, but this is just an expansion over repair shop. So I want to know, that is why I want to know how many more spaces will be taken in by this facility? Madam Chairman. If Kimberly wants to answer this, then that is okay.
Exactly. Well.
I'm not sure I understand your question. So the previous business that was there was Alejo Automotive, and they were there for some thirty years. And they decided to retire their business. We didn't renew their lease. And so that's basically it.
May I, may I ask a question, Kimberly?
Sure.
I just want to just double check. I see the time of operation is seven AM to seven PM. And I just was wondering, one question was, did the previous permits for the Alejo Automotive, were there hours, seven AM to seven PM as well?
You know, to be, I'm gonna be honest, I don't know. I that's, I think, a very loose twelve hours. You know, they were there, they didn't start business until ten, and they were closed by six PM.
Right, no, I mean, I mean, I am just saying, because my, my my mechanic, who's in Daly City, he, you know, he's, he's there until eight, nine o'clock at night. So that's why I was asking, only because there are, there's housing, there's some housing above, isn't it? Or no?
Behind, behind it, behind the parking.
Housing to the west.
Okay, so there's housing there. And then I guess the, so that that question, time wise, if if it's just the same, you know, if that's normal, what you would give, Michael? Is that like a normal time, seven AM to seven PM? Would that be a normal type of time for an automotive repair shop?
It is typical, yeah.
Okay, very good.
The hours they gave us, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm just asking. And the other thing, I was just gonna make a comment. I've spoken with various businesses right nearby that I go to. And not recently, maybe due to COVID, maybe due to Alejandro Automotive closing, I don't know. But the biggest complaint I heard was not finding parking, that people would would leave it, not even pay the meters, and they weren't getting ticketed. And they would be there forever. And it made it hard for the other businesses, for people to park, to go into their businesses. So that was a big complaint I heard months and months ago. And I wondered if, you know, I saw that it was mentioned in this. And I, in no way do I, do I, is is my question geared towards stopping or not voting yes on this? But I just was wondering, since I had the opportunity to mention that.
Behind Alejo, or excuse me, behind the proposed property, there are space, I believe it's five rows of parking, three deep. So for this business, there should not be any parking issues.
Okay, very good. No problem. No problem. I thought it would be prudent to mention it, only because numerous businesses had mentioned this to me.
Yeah, no, this is completely off me, off of, you know, street front mission. This is down the back.
Right, yeah, I saw that. It was quite large, and I've lived here all my life. I didn't realize there was anything like that behind there. So, yeah, Gary, Rick, Velma, do you guys have any questions?
Uh, no, not at the present.
Okay, shall we?
Madam Chairman, one more comment.
Yes.
I think I fully agree with you when you say that parking is always a problem when it comes to, especially when the body repair shop are always competing with the local businesses here in Mission Street, especially in Mission. Because, you know, my office is in Mission, that's why I know how it goes. That is why I am speaking this with with all my heart. Because especially, there's several, several auto body shop here in Mission Street. That's why I'm asking this. If an expansion is going on, or if it's just, just some sort of renovation, because normally they park it outside the Mission Street, and they park it as long as they want. That's why if there is a condition that the planning department will impose on this, that they shouldn't, they can park probably, but more or less, they should not compete with the local businesses in the city. That's why we don't have any parking anymore in Mission. We just, you know, we look around. And that's why, this is my concern, Your Honor.
Okay. Okay, Madam Chair, I, there is one question I want to ask. It just came up right now. Michael, what was the conditions of them double parking? Because double parking on Mission, that has always been an issue. And, you know, that really backs traffic up. And what was the condition put forth to them?
Well, there have been complaints related to, not necessarily this particular tenant space, but complaints related to the automotive sound repair business next door. There's been double parking that's occurred there. Of course, that's a, you know, an offense, that's under the municipal code, double parking is not allowed.
Right.
So we've basically developed a condition of approval where the applicant just needs to remind, it can be disclosed as part of the lease, that, you know, that's not allowed. And it could be, you know, if it becomes a bigger problem, it could be subject to a revocation of the use permit. But, yeah, I mean, it's not unique to this business. There are a lot of businesses are kind of have this situation where there's kind of a need to double park to offload vehicles and offloading cars that need to be repaired. Technically not allowed, though. I don't think, I'm not a, obviously.
No, I, the only thing I would say is just so that we're, we're having this conversation so that, you know, I think it wouldn't be fair to the other businesses to mention that. But besides that, you know, this particular business, it's obvious, has amazing amount of parking so that their vehicles, even if they had to double park for a little while to let cars off, they have somewhere to put their, when the, when this business location has a lease or a renter, they're able to store their vehicles in their own space. So that's, that's, that's really good.
Right. Melanie, do you mind if I say something?
Yes, please.
So this business or this this space, basically, it would be very awkward for someone to pull up along Mission Street and double park because then they'd be going traipsing down an alleyway to go back to a business. If this is more, people would actually pull off Mission, go down the, you know, the driveway and park in back. This is definitely, this is not a Mission Street property. Sure. So I don't want it to be confused as, you know, it'd be like, say, pulling up in front of B of A and double parking out front of B of A. This is not a Mission Street property, front property. So this is off the beaten path.
Yeah, the frontage of the business is not on Mission Street. That's, that's true.
And as I said, I don't, I had no idea it was there.
If I may direct the
Yes.
It sounds like, I know the double parking on Mission Street, which is an epidemic. And but in this case, I think I must say, because of that driveway and alleyway to the back, that probably the offenders are patronizing other businesses along there and not any future tenant of this place.
I would agree. I would agree, Rick. I would agree. But like I said, I, I thought it was important because it being Mission Street and the issues and the close neighbors close by, the businesses mentioning it, I thought I should bring it up. But in your case, you have an amazing amount of parking, Kimberly. And so it's, you know, and I think, did we have, did everyone else ask their questions before we could move to Tatum?
If the those companies that operates this body shop should never occupy the main street, which is Mission Street. This should be the one of the condition of approval. So be it. So that is my contention, Your Honor. Let us not allow them to, because sometimes they say, oh, we will not, we are not parking at the at Mission Street, but at the same time, when this is approved, then they will do it. So let us put it, one of the conditionalities of approval, Your Honor.
Okay, so.
Here, we did add a condition of approval that none of the vehicles that are being repaired can occupy the public right of way. It gets a little tough when customers park their own car there. So it's really related to the business owners moving cars around and that. So there is a condition of approval that we do have related to that.
So we, so just clarifying, clarifying it. We do have it. So that's good, Ray. I mean, if we have it already there, I think that's important. That helps, that will help with the, you know, that perpetual parking problem. So I'm glad it was there. Thank you, Michael, for clarifying that. And Ray, thank you for bringing that up. That's important. Thank you. So thank you to everybody. So if we were all good with that, may I move to Tatum to see if we have any comments?
Please.
Thank you.
It looks like we don't have any comments on this item, so there's nothing to report.
Thank you, Tatum. So let us see if there is a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. So did I say that?
Did I hear one and two? Okay, okay, very good. So I have a motion and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, so nobody opposed. We're moving on to, is there a motion to adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report of September first, two thousand and twenty?
Moved.
Second, is there a second? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, very good. And so is there a motion to affirm the environmental assessment?
Can we first recommend that the planning commission, the city council? I think we will, that's okay.
It's coming. I think it's coming. I'm following my list unless, but thank you for paying attention to that one. So is there a motion to affirm the environmental assessment?
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. So the last one is a motion to recommend approval of use permit UPR twelve twenty zero one four eight one seven, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report of February second, two thousand and twenty-one. So a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good.
I have to have a roll call.
Uh, let's see. We could have a roll call. May we have a roll call, please?
I will do a roll call. Crump?
Thank you, Rick.
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Coronio?
Aye. Perfect. Okay, so now we have item number two. And I will then, look, Michael, you've moved on my screen. You're in the right hand side. You're on the left side. I was looking for you. So I'm going to let you take over zone change, ZC zero one two one one four eight four six.
Okay, and I'm gonna share my screen again.
Thank you.
Close this guy. Okay, can everybody see my screen or my presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is a request by the city of Daly City to amend the zoning ordinance and zoning map, establishing a commercial cannabis combining district. We'll get into what exactly that means in a moment. But first, we'll go over a little history as to the city's cannabis regulations, if you will. The voters of California in two thousand and sixteen, as most of you know, adopted or passed Proposition sixty-four, which essentially allowed cities to allow the retail sale of cannabis within the city limits. There's also cultivation, processing, manufacture, distribution, testing, some other cannabis-related sorts of uses. Tonight, we're dealing with the retail sale of cannabis from a commercial storefront location. And that's what the zoning would permit if it's forwarded from planning commission to the city council and adopted by the city council. In November of two thousand and eighteen, the voters of Daly City approved a business license tax on cannabis businesses, up to ten percent of receipts in anticipation of the future allowance of cannabis. So the voters of the city, and the majority of voters of the city in Proposition sixty-four voted to pass that proposition, and as, and as well, the voters of Daly City authorized collection of the business license tax. So there's actually been a vote of the people that sort of establishes that this is a use that's something that people think is an appropriate use in the city. And so the city council in October of two thousand and nineteen adopted an ordinance authorizing commercial cannabis activities. And the city council also established a process for permitting and regulating commercial cannabis. The city's police department is heavily involved in this permitting process. There's a state license that's involved, and the commercial cannabis business license, again, reviewed by the police department, planning division. And so there's an ordinance that's already existing since October of two thousand and nineteen that essentially anticipates the allowance of retail sales of cannabis. After that meeting, the city began work through council committee meetings, providing direction to the city staff regarding location criteria and what land use entitlements would be required. So the, so the council in October two thousand and nineteen said they confirmed the will of the people, if you will, to allow the retail sale. But then essentially waited to pass zoning changes. And that's what we're contemplating tonight. And so since April two thousand and nineteen through last summer, and actually through November of two thousand and twenty, council committee, for those of you who are unfamiliar with what a council committee is, it's two of the five city council members, essentially gave staff direction about where commercial cannabis retail sales could occur, given state mandated buffer zones and the buffer zones that the city council thought was appropriate, as well as what sort of land use entitlements should be required for the retail sale of cannabis. as well as what sort of land use entitlements should be required for the retail sale of cannabis. And this effort by the council committee concluded in November twenty twenty with the final recommendation. And that is the, um, those are the maps and the zoning entitlement process, the overlay and the zoning entitlement process that we're bringing to you tonight for consideration. And that brings us to the present time, February through March twenty twenty one. But we're proposing, uh, again, what the council committee has directed the city staff to bring forward. And that's sort of the history in a nutshell, if you will, of how, uh, commercial cannabis, uh, came to be something that we're contemplating tonight. So essentially, what the overlay zones are, is that every parcel in Daly City has, is in a zoning district, as you probably know. Um, most of the zones where we allow, uh, commercial re- cannabis retail sales are in a C one light commercial zone. The news, the new commercial cannabis is an overlay zone that would go on top of that. So C one dash CC would be the name of those zones. So those zones would be distinguished from other just regular C one zones where retail sales would not be allowed. And that's sort of the mechanics of how that would work on the zoning map. People would call and, uh, the planner would be able to very easily tell them whether, uh, commercial retail sales were allowed just based on the CC overlay zoning designation. So as a zoning function, that's how that works. Um, as proposed, the retail sale of cannabis would be allowed, cannabis would be allowed by right without future requirement for a use permit or other discretionary approval requiring a public hearing. This is a very important point that we want to make very clear. Um, the city um, is essentially front-loading the process of public hearings. We notified of tonight's meeting, we notified over twenty-two hundred property owners throughout, um, not only just Daly City, but town of Colma, unincorporated San Antonio County, San Francisco and, uh, Brisbane and South San Francisco. And I think maybe even Pacifica a little bit. So quite a bit of, uh, public outreach for tonight's meeting. And of course, the city council hearing would be the same mail out. So we're front-loading the process and notifying people that, uh, cannabis retail sales is something that the city intends to allow, again, by right, without any future use permit approval, for example. So like the item before where there's a use permit, there's a little hearing. The current proposal is that every time a retail business comes in, we will not hold a public hearing for that because we're, again, up doing it upfront. There are two hundred and thirty properties in twelve eligibility zones to which this, um, overlay would apply. And, um, there's only one, uh, retail, commercial cannabis business allowed in each eligibility zone. So there's essentially a citywide cap of twelve retailers. So again, twelve retailer citywide cap. So it's not like every one of the two hundred and thirty properties are gonna have a, uh, retail cannabis business. Only twelve of them at the very most. Um, the combining district maps were based generally on whether the frontage of the property is within uh, or greater than six hundred feet from a public or private school and or any, uh, use, use that serves youth. Um, and, uh, make this point, uh, just for example, on School Street, the north side of School Street, you'll notice that, um, some of the rear of those properties is within six hundred feet of the, of, of, I believe it's Jeff, Jefferson High School. And so, but the frontage is not. And so that is the criteria under which we develop the, uh, overlay zone. So frontage of property. There are certain properties that are, um, excluded altogether. And, um, those are state-owned properties that are on the county line of, um, San Francisco. Anything in a planned development zones excluded. Anything at the service station is excluded. And so, um, there are certain things that are just not, uh, we're not gonna have, uh, commercial cannabis retail sales allowed. So therefore, neither of the, uh, major shopping centers, Westlake Shopping Center, Ceremony Shopping Center, um, have retail sale allowed. Cal Palace is retail sale not allowed. Um, anything industrial in the Bay Shore also. And several, several other properties would not have the retail sale. Um, they would not be included in the, uh, combined zone. I'll, i- i- instead of going through this whole list, um, we can kind of go through it quick. But what areas are included? There are several areas. We have maps of these areas. It'd probably be easier to talk about those than to go through every one of these. Um, but there's several shopping centers around town where the combining district would allow the retail sale. These are in your staff reports. There's nothing, there's no new information here. Um, and we're gonna go through this with maps anyway, so I don't wanna take too much time up on these two slides. But there is essentially fourteen different, um, generalized areas, and they're combined in the maps. We'll, we'll, we'll see this in a moment. Um, and so here are the, um, overlay zones. And again, there are, um, twelve just different areas in general. This is a citywide map. This is the, uh, similar to the map that was distributed as part of the twenty-two hundred flyers we sent out. So uh, property owners were provided a description of tonight's meeting and what would be happening, as well as a map on the rear that showed in generalized, uh, you know, relationship to their property where we could expect retail sale. Um, we've had phone calls about, you know, trying to get more detailed information, and we provided the public all of the detailed information that was requested. More detailed maps, and those are these. So we did provide these to the public and we're sharing them with you. And they were also attachment to your staff report. So, um, one of the areas, um, that's proposed for the overlay is on Mission Street. And this is past top of the hill. Um, just to orient, uh, some of you, this is Templeton Avenue. I hope you can pointer. Crocker Avenue. So the frontages of these, um, Mission Street businesses would be within the, uh, overlay zone. If anybody wants me to stop on any of these, happy to do it. Um, these are in no particular order geographically. This is the Bay Shore neighborhood. A little less zoomed in, but we have some C one properties also in this area. Um, in the neigh- in the area of Castillo and, um, and the other one is near the, um, the intersection of Geneva and Bay Shore Boulevard. This area is the City Lights Shopping Center, south of King Drive on Geller Boulevard. It's on the border with South San Francisco. This is sort of the central Daly City area. So all of these properties would be within the overlay zone. These are areas fronting Sullivan Avenue around City Hall. This is, these are properties fronting School Street, a cou- a couple fronting Mission Street. And again, anything that's not zone C one is excluded. This is the, uh, complex that contains Planet Fitness, bounded by Washington, San Pedro, and Unicara Sarah. And of course, this is the intersection of Mission and East Market and Market Street. There's some properties that are included there. And then moving over to the southeast, we have properties on Hillside, um, that are bordering unincorporated, uh, Colma. And, uh, there's a, there's a few properties in that area that are also proposed for inclusion in the overlay. So that's sort of the, if you will, central Daly City, uh, portion of this. This is Skyline Plaza. Intersection of South Gate, Skyline Boulevard. I think everybody knows where that is. This is the, uh, Saint Francis Square Shopping Center. And South Gate and Saint Francis. Everybody knows where that is. This is the Alta Ceremony Shopping Center and Geller Marketplace. So this is, uh, Geller and Ceremony Boulevard. We all are familiar with this area. Of course, the service stations are excluded from the overlay zone, the Olympic Olympian. And, uh, I think that's a Chevron. And there's a small, um, it's a newer, um, sort of, uh, commercial strip center. Um, that's at Callan and Kings Northwest Corner. That's included for, that's proposed for inclusion in the overlay. And so those are the areas that are proposed for inclusion in the overlay, and we can review any of those. So as I mentioned previously, there are eligibility zones. Um, the city council, uh, committee had desired to sort of, um, we had talked about a separation requirement between, um, the, uh, between any two uses uh, to retail, you know, cannabis retail uses. And instead, what we decided to do in the end, um, the committee gave us direction is to establish eligibility zones wherein only one cannabis retail use would be allowed within each eligibility zone. And there's twelve total, and this is a map of those. And I have detailed maps as follows. This is, so one would be allowed in the, uh, uh, in the Mission Street, um, area, I mentioned, past top of the hill. One would be allowed in the, uh, each of the two Bay Shore areas. Or actually, may- maybe one between the two, excuse me. That's two A and two B. They're, they're actually numbered. And then, uh, one would be allowed in the area around City Hall. Let me just back up. I don't wanna tell you something wrong here. No, it's one in each of these areas, excuse me. So one in each of the two Bay Shore areas. One in each of the areas that are in, that are circled or rectangle. So one in, along School Street, one in this area of San Pedro, Washington, Unicara Sarah, and at the intersection of Mission, uh, Market. And then one in the area of the Linden Hillside area. One could be allowed inside Skyline Plaza, one inside Saint Francis Square. One in the, um, Geller Marketplace, Alta Ceremony, uh, Shopping Center areas. One in that area that I mentioned at King and Callan. Another for, uh, in the city, uh, City Lights Shopping Center. And that's, I think that's basically it. If there's any questions about any of this, we're happy to answer those. Um, the proposal is exempt from CEQA. And, uh, we are recommending that the planning commission receive public comment on this and advance it to the city council for consideration of adoption of the overlay zones. With that, I'm gonna conclude my presentation. I'll go back to the, um, I would stick with the eligibility zone map.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. I appreciate this. Um, may I ask a, a few questions and then I'll open it up to my fellow commissioners? Uh, has the city or, uh, have we given requirements to these? Put, uh, do, have we written out or have we done any investigation on other cities that have, uh, these, uh, stores and, uh, what their requirements are with regards to how their setup is or, you know, 'cause I would say that my only familiarity with this type of store is seeing it on the news. And, um, I, no, I wondered if, besides here Daly City, which we were, were thinking about, are there any local cities, Michael, uh, close to us that already have these stores? And how is it going with those stores?
Um, there are, um, two cities in particular. And the city and county of San Francisco, of course, allows, uh, retail cannabis, as well as the city of Pacifica, that are the two proximate, uh, cities to us. Some other cities in the county have allowed cannabis uses. Um, it's not clear, completely clear. I think San Carlos is considering allowing retail sale. Um, but for sure, we have them in, uh, San Francisco, Pacifica. And, um, in terms of how it's going, um, I don't know how to answer that other than anecdotally, um, I'm a resident of Pacifica myself. Um, there's a store that's on, we actually have a couple of stores. It, again, this is an anecdotal answer. They don't seem to cause a problem. Um, they're quite nice. Um, we actually have a photo, if you're interested in, of one of the stores on Palmetto and Pacifica.
Thank you.
There's, there's many examples in San Francisco as well, um, of, you know, these sorts of, uh, retail establishments. Um, you know, they're, they're a little bit more boutiquey, if you will, up in San Francisco. I think that the, I'll just show you the Pacifico. I think I included it at the end.
I think.
I read picture, but.
Yeah, it's good.
No, it's, this is the sort of thing I think that we could expect, um, here in Daly City. Um, just a reuse of existing retail space, um, sort of a business. And, uh, again, we haven't conducted any interviews with the Pacifica Police Department about whether this has been an issue. I don't know if, um, yeah, uh, Brandon Phipps is on, is in the meeting. And I don't know if he's had any contact with Pacifica PD on this, but, um, I personally have not. So I don't know if I'm really answering your question.
Well, I, yeah, no, I, I mean, I put a lot of, not a lot of thought, but I, I put it, you know, I had a few conversations and, you know, you're, everyone's first thought is, oh, not here. And then, but then you have, you know, you have to realize is that, you know, it was, it came to a vote and people voted yes. And we, you know, once it was voted in yes with the state of California, and then once cities, uh, welcomed it into their communities, um, it's, it's a store. Uh, so, and I understand concerns. That's why I was asking if there was any news or, you know, what does a typical store look like? What, what, what we expect? Um, you know, if there was any news from the cities that had, uh, have these stores, if they had, you know, any issues or not, that, that's, I'm sure everyone who may have one of these in their neighborhood would think or worry or ask, you know, um, how it was going at, 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 uh, in other cities. Um, would anyone else, any commissioners have any ideas or thoughts?
Don't turn around.
Yes, Ray.
I have a lot of question, but, uh, let me start first, uh, by asking, uh, how, how many feet or meters is allowed, not, not allowed, we, if you're looking at the churches and schools? As far as the distance concerned, Michael?
Well, we, um, this, this map shows six hundred foot separation, uh, to frontages from public and private schools and facilities that serve youth. I, we've, we've done a few iterations of this map with the council committee. And we may have, we may have looked at, I don't know if we developed a map with the churches, but we, we looked at, we did look at the church use. And the, the thing is, is that when we include, there's, there are quite a few churches in town. And when we include those two, we really do, if this is a land use that the, you know, the city wants to allow, we end up with so few areas that, that would actually permit, that would provide an opportunity, rather, for this sort of a retail use to, um, exist that, um, I think this was the logic that we ended up excluding it and, um, excluding the church use. There were, there are other, you know, uses that were thrown out as potentially sensitive too. Um, but this was a map that we thought, you know, could allow, 'cause a lot of the, a lot of the some of the shopping centers might not even want to allow this use at all. Um, so we, we really do need to, if it's gonna be something that we do want to allow, provide, you know, I think I mentioned it's about two hundred and forty properties, and not, not all of them are gonna be. you know, I think I mentioned it's about 240 properties and not, not all of them are going to be willing to lease for this type of a use. And so we, we do need to consider that when we exclude properties. And churches, one of, churches was one of the criteria that I think we cited that maybe we could, you know, not have that as a, as a, as a limiting factor, if you will.
May I say?
We have, we, I received three letters here from Salahuddin, Melinda Hood, and the mayor of the Eric Colvin, that, you know, it concerned about the school. At the same time, people will always say that in our backyard, but normally our interest here is always for public interests, general welfare, public safety and public health. That is our, our main, main purpose here as commissioner. So that's the point I'm driving at. If, if we could comply with basically, especially the schools and churches, probably we are very good for that, for now. And another question that in my mind is, if you project, assuming 10, assuming only 10 stores in Daly City, did you have, do you have any study about the cost benefit index about how much the city will, will, will be getting? For a store, do you have any study on that? Because I know this is a big money. Because when I went to, I remember when I went to Amsterdam. In Amsterdam, it is allowed, but in Berlin, it's not. So that's why during a weekend, there are a lot of people in, in Amsterdam because of the cannabis and edible oils or oil or gummies, as they say. That is why I know this is a big money. So do, do you have any study on that? How much revenue can the city get on this?
I, I can sort of jump in, I'll probably turn it over to Brandon Phipps, our Economic Development Specialist.
Okay, go ahead.
This evening. But I will say, one of the items the council considered when they approved cannabis in Daly City was identifying a tax. It was voted on by the voters and the council had sort of framed the language for it. And so what the, the city is looking at is up to a 10% tax on retail sales in addition to sales tax and business license taxes. They didn't want to establish it right away, they just wanted to establish a cap. And that cap right now is up to 10%. And, and so once this overlay is identified, the council will have to select what that tax rate is. You know, it's, it's a little bit of a Goldilocks sort of issue, right? So, so the, the state is already taxing cannabis businesses. And then local jurisdictions are allowed to tax them as well. But if they're overtaxed, then it, it still promotes the black market, right? So if, if, if there's too many taxes, people aren't going to buy the legal cannabis, but continue to buy illegal cannabis because they can get a better price. So the taxing structure has to, you know, the city needs to get what it needs to get out of cannabis businesses, but it can't be to the detriment of the cannabis businesses so that they, they can't function and thrive. So at this point, we don't know exactly what our taxing rate will be, but we're identifying up to 10%. And I don't know if Mr. Phipps would like to add on to the information I just provided or, or if that covers it.
Yeah, yeah, happy to add a couple of things. So, so based on 10 dispensaries locating in Daly City, as you mentioned, and based on some analysis that we've done in San Mateo County and San Francisco, we have come to understand that cannabis dispensaries generally accrete around a quarter million dollars apiece to cities. And obviously, based on the taxation and the percentage of tax that we choose to provide, you know, that number is going to go up or down. It's also going to depend on the quality of the cannabis dispensary, the size of the cannabis dispensary and the location. But taking that baseline 250,000 number with 10 dispensaries, we can assume $2.5 million in annual revenue to the city.
I asked this question, Your Honor, because I was reading the United Nations report of cannabis in, like in Portugal, the Netherlands, Switzerland and Spain. When they legalized this exponentially, the, there was an increase of revenue. And there was less crime. I, I don't know, this is true, but this is how the United Nations report. But you know, it, it can also be done here if we, than going underground, because underground is, you know, if you read the story of Pablo Escobar, he gained about $50 billion. And yet, if we legalize it, at least it goes to the proper, the city. It can even build around good things in the city, that's why. And yet, if, if you legalize this, if you try to make it as good as, just like in Oregon now, they approve it. They approve it in such a way that the state to decriminalize the use or possession of hard drugs, including methamphetamine, including pentanil and marijuana. Because I'm saying this because it's very important to us, because some people are, there is a company of information that coming, it's dangerous, it's, it can, 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 a lot of crimes. But actually, if we're going to study, just like the prohibition act, long, long time ago, they said it's dangerous to, to drink liquor, but now liquor is open. Just like probably in, in Portugal and Netherlands and Switzerland, wherein there was a 400, 545 increase over 2016. It started, I was just reading the United Nations report, which is about from 2001 to 2008, when they legalized so-called marijuana use or the hard drugs. And people, it becomes more, less crime. I, I don't understand, but you know, culturally where I came from, the Philippines and Asia, in Asia, it is taboo, it's illegal. Any possession, you can, you can go to jail or can even death for, for that matter. So I, I'm just trying to balance the discussion here, Your Honor, because I know, to my mind, it is really illegal. Because, but you know, this has been going on for so long. When I was even in Harvard, a lot of students taking up marijuana, because they thought, although it's good for their health, it's good for their, they can study more, they can, they can read more and they can memorize more, I don't know, that's true. But that is how I, I look at it. Everywhere you go, like in Massachusetts Avenue in Harvard, you could buy it. But, but it's only illegal, it's, we call it underground. But here, we are trying to legalize this. And you know, in Oregon now, the first state to decriminalize the possession or use of hard drugs is, if, if you're caught without any doctor's order, you're, you're going to be cited only by, by like a ticket. Ticket of, just like in the, in the vehicle, you know. That is why I'm saying this, because there are company of information, because even my wife doesn't want it. I said, well, this is, we have to abide with the obligation and contracts, the principle, people approving this. That is why I, I, I'm saying this, because just to balance the, the situation, balance the argument, balance the, the, and I know this will be a big money for the city in case this is properly managed. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ray, for your input. Velma or Gary or Rick, do you guys have any input you'd like to discuss?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, Velma.
Well, I think I just wanted to point out that, that some of the public comment was the concern on School Street, because it's very close to Jefferson High School and it's a main walkway to the school. And I guess from one of the comments and the experience in Pacifica has been, even though they can't control, you know, it coming, cannabis coming into campus, but it would help not having a physical storefront on the way to school. So I would want to recommend to council to omit the School Street location site.
That was a thought, and I, I did read that letter. I also noticed in reading the letter from the city of Colma, they're concerned that that there may be more incidences and because they are so close to Hillside, that they would be a first responder to any incidences with the storefront on Hillside. And I did see that. So for me, the school, as Ray and Velma said, because the children do walk that way, and I say children, they're teenagers, do walk that way. Now, I, I do have a question, you can't, it's, it, you have to be a certain age to buy it, right? Just like alcohol, right? So that, you know, so a teenager should not be able to walk in and buy cannabis or, or cookies with cannabis or brownies or whatever they do, or gummies, you know. But so they are regulated, the stores, just like, just like when you go by at a liquor store. Is that correct? I'm getting a lot of nods.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Minors are not allowed to.
It's 20, 21 and over, yes.
21 and old, good, so it wasn't like 18, you know, okay, good. I would say though, is temptation walking by, you know, there, I, I could see the idea of not being, even though it's over 600 feet, that it, it, it may not be the best place to have a cannabis store on School Street. That's just my thought. And I would let, I think Velma and then Gary, you were going to speak, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just, I just, all my questions and concerns have already been addressed, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
No worries, Rick.
Madam Chairman, can I make an additional comment?
Sure, sure.
Well, is the city ready for this regulation? We have to have some sort of highly regulated stores that will come out in the city. Because I remember, when, I, I was just curious, when I was in, I remember when I was in Vancouver, there was a dispensary, you call it dispensary store, or some sort of, kind of, in selling cannabis. There should be some sort of doctor's order, especially for those who wants to get edibles, oil or anything, or marijuana for to smoke. There should be some sort of safeguard, really. Nobody just can enter there and buy, I like this, I like, no. There should be some sort of a, a highly regulated thing on this, Michael. So this, I, I would like to just express this, that it should be incorporated in, anyway, the, the city council will be deliberating on this. And I, I highly suggest to the council that they should put a highly regulated, like before going to the store, you cannot just enter to the store and, I want that, I want this, no. There, there should be some sort of a, an order coming from either the doctor or for, for any medical practitioner, because he is sick of this, sick of that, or his stomach ache, or he cannot sleep, something like that. Now, this can be, this can be done, Your Honor, as long as, because it has been done in, I, I have cited just like in Portugal, Netherlands, Switzerland, they were successful. And, but there are some countries in Asia, I told you, not even to touch possession, you can, you can die, really. It, it's really a very delicate thing to, especially in Asian countries like Indonesia, Singapore, Philippines. And their possession, assuming you're not smoking or drink, taking this, but the moment you possess this, you can be killed. Especially if you resist. So to me, that's why there are so-called some sort of, they're saying it's a human rights violation, but sometimes when there is resistance, things can happen. So I, I also would suggest to our future, I would say, conditions, we have to impose some sort of a, a, a condition that people will have to believe to follow. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you for speaking, Ray. Rick, did you have some thoughts?
Well, yeah. Not that I disagree with what Ray just said, but very simply, the idea of having to have a doctor's script is no longer California law. California law changed and you no longer needed the medical marijuana dispensary, it was a general dispensary. And state law trumps anything we or the council might do. Thank you, Teresa.
No, thank you, Rick. I mean, I, I, I see everyone's concern, our biggest concern is that I'm viewing here is that our concern is, number one, for the students, not to make it easy or you don't keep walking by and temptation and have your uncle, cousin, best friend, somebody who's 21, go in and buy whatever and have a party. And, and the second thing is, is that they follow the rules. And I'm sure before this came to us, there is this committee that has been meeting, I'm sure, Tatum and Michael, that, and Kelly, that have been meeting, discussing these exact questions. But I think it's great that we are discussing it. So if any of the public are listening, they're seeing that we are looking out for their best interest. So may I just ask, Tatum, I guess, Tatum or Kelly, just to reiterate, I'm sure there is a committee that has been going over all the, or Brandon, the, who would, you know, go over the rules and regulations of what is required for a business to stop, you know, to open a business. Because when we saw the, may I say, when we saw the map, all you're saying is, okay, in this location and this location and this location, there may be a business. Is there an opening? Maybe, maybe not. Is there a storefront available? Maybe, maybe not. But if there was, and someone applied, they should be able to move in there and open a business. But I think the biggest, greatest concern I'm hearing, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that we want to make sure that we're verbalizing this, that there is a committee, that there are people in, in, on the committee in Daly City, that are asking the same questions we are and making sure that everything is going to be done by the book.
Yeah, so I can provide some background on that. So when the council voted to approve cannabis businesses in Daly City, it was an amendment to the municipal code that addresses business license issuance. And when they adopted that, what they were adopting are the provisions for allowing such a business and special business license requirement. What is before you this evening is really, and I think you hit the nail on the head, this is the where. So this isn't about the how we regulate them, but when we allow them, where are we going to allow them? But please do know that Chapter Five of the Municipal Code sort of already addresses what the city is going to be looking for, for business license issuance. And a huge part of that is the security plan that requires the police department's approval. So the police department is going to be reviewing each and every single one of these applications. Staff is going to have to do some tweaks to the ordinance or present to the council. And what we're hoping to do is align those tweaks of the ordinance with this map so that the council, when it's presented to them, they can see suggested changes to the existing ordinance with the map. And some of the changes that I think we may be looking at mostly have to do with additional license criteria. So what are those additional things that need to be considered when the license is issued? The other thing is how these businesses compete. So we've created these eligibility zones and we're identifying that only one business can locate in that eligibility zone. There could be competition, so it's possible you could get two competing applications in an eligibility zone. So another thing this ordinance is going to have to address is, is how that selection occurs. So yes, there's actually already standards on what these businesses need to get their license. And it's above and beyond, you know, a, a dress shop or a flower shop or other standard retail uses. There's an extra layer on top of that. There's an extra layer on top of that that requires state licensing, a security plan, the total limitation of how many can be within a geographic area. So those standards do.
And the other thing I would just say is that with School Street being one of the ones that I think, if you don't mind, I think that it sounds like the, all of us on the commission are saying that would probably not be a good spot. The only other one I would say is if it's too close to Thornton High School and Jefferson High School, meaning, I know when you said East Market and Mission Street, but Thornton's right up the street from there. That's the only thing I would throw in, 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 in looking at the map that we were presented. And besides that, I think that, Ray, thank you, and Velba and Rick and Gary, I think we, I think we've asked all our questions. Do you guys feel comfortable moving forward?
How about, how about the one on Hillside? I think that should be, that's my recommendation, that should be included in where, to admit that to, because that's quite near Susan B. Anthony School, you know. So that, that's near a school, and I, I have concern about that also.
Very good. So we could put our recommendations that, you know, if, if that's okay, Tatum, that those, I know that's, you know, maybe instead of six hundred feet, we're talking twelve hundred feet or something, you know, just give it more space, not, not discounting the entire Hillside, but, you know, there is a lot of residential there on Hillside. There are numerous schools in that vicinity. And so, you know, I, I, I agree, I agree on those. So if we, if it's okay, we could turn to Tatum if there's any, any letters or emails or anything you've received, did you want to let us know?
We have to open, we have to open, we have to open. We have to open the public hearing first.
Right, right, right. Okay, so well, the first one, first I see Tatum and then we close it, so I think it's open, right? Are we technically open right now? Thank you, Ray.
Yeah, and we, we do have, last I checked, we have ten comments.
Okay, here you go.
All right, let me, bear with me as I go through these and read each one of them. I've kind of glanced through them, they're all relatively short, so I'm going to read them verbatim so that we don't lose anything interpretation here. So comment number one is from Ron Foye on eighty-nine Guthie Street. And his comment says, "It would be a mistake of huge magnitude to allow a cannabis dispensary anywhere in Daly City. Nothing good will come of it, but several negative consequences arise, including an increase in criminality." The second comment is from Raymond and Teresa Fung at fifty-nine Carlton. "Good evening, planning commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to hear from us. My wife is an elementary school educator and we have a youth son. We live in a neighborhood where there are lots of family with younger kids and youth. There is also a high school and two elementary schools in very close proximity. We are very concerned about rezoning to allow commercial cannabis in our neighborhood. According to research, high rate of high school children experience drugs and addiction. Having access close to this area will be a mistake if the planning commission doesn't consider the long-term impacts this will have. We hope that you will consider this when you make the decision. Thank you." The next comment, actually, there is no comment written. We just have the name Julie Chan-Mock from McDonald Avenue in Daly City, but they didn't provide any written comment. Comment number four is from Paul L. on First Avenue. He wrote, "I'd like to vote against having this, especially when it's nearby schools and churches in a family residential area." Our fifth comment is from Malu Nam from Highgate in Daly City. "I'm against the issuing of licenses to permit the retail sale of cannabis in Daly City." Our sixth comment is from Melinda Hugh from Crestview Circle. "Good evening, planning commissioners. Thank you for your time today. I would like to request that School Street be removed from the cannabis overlay for multiple reasons. First, students at Jefferson High School use School Street as a main route to get to and from school, and I do not think cannabis use should be allowed along a critical route to school. Second, School Street should be reserved for neighborhood businesses where neighbors can walk to essential services, like the Corner Market or the Laundromat. Third, there is not enough parking and loading on School Street to support cannabis use. We already experienced substantial double parking, and cannabis use would create more hazardous conditions for bicycles and pedestrians due to double parking. Given these reasons, I respectfully request that School Street be removed from the cannabis overlay. Thank you." Our seventh comment, oh, okay, comment number seven is the same comment from Melinda Hugh that I just read, so it is a duplicate. Comment number eight is from Mary Beer from Ceremony, six nine nine Ceremony Boulevard. "Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Mary Beer, and I am the Director of Prevention Services for Jefferson Union High School District. I am coming to you to urge you to create land zoning policy that allows for a thousand feet buffer, protecting our schools and youth-serving facilities from cannabis retail establishment. Youth are affected by having cannabis sold in their neighborhoods. Simply by walking past a cannabis business after school creates a social norm. It becomes a normal part of what they see, hear, and even smell on a daily basis. We need to do all we can to create social norms that lead to positive health outcomes. The stress of COVID- nineteen has caused more depression and anxiety in young people in our community. Should support healthy options and resources for youth. Retail cannabis establishments do not belong close to where our young people are learning and playing. Please consider one thousand feet boundaries around our schools and youth-serving agencies. We would prefer to not allow retail cannabis at all, but it's clear that this is not the direction the city is taking. So please consider the thousand-foot boundary, the very least you can do." Comment number eight is from Francesca Lomoton from Harbor Boulevard in Belmont. "Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Francesca Lomoton, and I am with San Mateo County Health Community Health Promotion. Stores in the community can play a vital role in resident health. The types of products available and how they're promoted can especially impact you. Density of alcohol and tobacco retailers influence youth exposure to these substances and are associated with other community health harms. These retailers disproportionately impact certain communities and concentrate in low-income communities of color. Cannabis retailers could have similar impact. You may want to consider whether the proposed locations for cannabis sales are disproportionately located in certain communities. Additionally, tobacco and alcohol advertising exposures are associated with perceptions of lower risk and increased use among youth. A study in Oregon, looking at eighth and eleventh graders, found that exposure to cannabis advertising is common among youth. Youth most frequently reported seeing advertising on storefronts and online, and odds of exposure were significantly higher for certain groups, including youth in school districts with a closer average proximity to retail cannabis stores. More than eight in ten youth in either grade were exposed within districts where the average proximity to a store was less than one mile. The two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen California Healthy Kids Survey for Jefferson Union High School District also shows current cannabis use as eighteen percent for eleventh graders and thirty-six percent for non-traditional school students. I hope this information is helpful as you make your recommendations. Please consider how retail density, location, and storefront advertising may impact you. Thank you." The next comment is from Deidre Tronco at San Diego Avenue. "Good evening to our planning commission. Reading the available public documents, I am concerned that Daly City and the planning commission did not mention or have a racial and/or social equity consideration into the selection process in their report. I am concerned because it does not take into consideration applicants who have been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs, or applicants with minority female or local resident ownership. I suggest we look into cities such as San Francisco in regards to implementing cannabis equity. Thank you." And the eleventh and final comment is from Mikio Akima from Canterbury Avenue. "Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to hear my comment today. My name is Mikio Akima, and I am a youth leader specialist for the Daly City Prevention Collaborative at Thomas R. Polisita from the Japanese Community Youth Council. I am here to address the zoning of cannabis businesses in Daly City. In my work with the youth, there have been numerous discussions around the amount of exposure youth have had with cannabis. Since the beginning of COVID, youth have already shown an increased amount of concern about their peers, classmates, and friends partaking in cannabis usage. By allowing additional cannabis-based businesses in the area, youth are at a much higher risk to exposure, curiosity, and potentially consuming more cannabis-based products. I ask that when the commission makes their decision around the zoning of these businesses, that they take into account the increased risk this puts our youth at. In a similar fashion to alcohol and the allowance of liquor stores to dominate a multitude of neighborhoods, the increased amount of cannabis-based businesses will only normalize the narrative of cannabis use in our society. While the medical uses of cannabis may have shown to be effective for adults, youth that are exposed are at a risk for many health factors in their future. So please consider what you are saying to the youth by allowing more cannabis-based businesses in the area. Thank you for your time, commissioners." Okay, so I'm just confirming that nothing came in while I was speaking, and no. So there were only eleven comments, and they have all been read into the record.
Thank you, Tatum, I really appreciate that. So at this time, if we have no more discussion, I'd like to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Do we have a second? Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Teresa?
Teresa? Yes.
A thought comes to mind, we have, it had been discussed earlier, several particular sites close to schools were mentioned. The one thing that struck me when I first read this, I was kind of surprised at the six hundred-foot border, because I always thought schools were supposed to be a thousand feet away. I wonder if we shouldn't, basically, rather than naming specific zones, recommend that the maps be redrawn so that any sites that are within a thousand feet are excluded.
I agree, in fact, don't get mad at me, but I was thinking we double the six hundred and go with twelve hundred, just because.
A thousand's kind of a figure that you generally hear.
Okay.
If I may interject, the six hundred was a number that was, when, when the state of California established the standardized buffer areas, we used the state standard of six hundred feet. So, so it wasn't a number staff invented, it was a number that was sort of identified by the state. But, but cities are allowed to increase that, that distance. But I just wanted to be clear that the six hundred number did come from a sort of a state.
Oh. Madam Chairman, can I say something?
Sure, one second, wait, one second. Rick, did you finish? Yeah, no, no, it's okay, Ray. Rick, did you finish before I moved to Ray?
Yeah, go, go ahead, Ray.
Okay, Ray, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
I didn't want you to lose your thought.
Well, I don't fully subscribe, increasing it to a double, six hundred is, I would say, very logical. Daly City, if you are just going to see, it's too small. We are not that big city, compared to other cities like South City or Redwood City. Daly City is practically, you go to the left, the school, you go to the right, there's church. So I don't, I don't subscribe to that. What, what kind of business is that, when we're talking about putting up a business acumen here in Daly City? So we cannot just, because the, what I'm saying here is, they should articulate more of a regulation than, you know, even, we have been, you have been, you have seen this, the underground, whether it is illegal or not, if they want to get it, they will get it, believe me. I have seen those people. That is why it is more of a regulation than increasing the distance. So to me, I would suggest that whatever the city decides, like Tatum had said, six hundred, to me, is very logical, because Daly City is too small.
So may I ask this question, just, just so, if we're saying, leave it at six hundred, are we still saying that we don't want to be near, you know, the major, the schools?
That's what I say.
The high schools and the schools.
Near the school or near the church. I said, I asked a question to Michael.
Right, right.
And we should be more aggressive in articulating the regulation than, you know, even if you put it two thousand miles. If you want the underground, you can, you can get it.
No, I understand.
Regulation in the city.
Right, right, no, I understand, but what, what I'm hearing from everybody, even, including yourself, is that, and that's not even talking about churches, because if we included churches with schools, I would hope that, you know, people are going with family to church, whereas a child may be walking to school themselves with other students getting off the bus or walking down the street or whatever, whatever that may be. So either we're looking at the bumper of six hundred feet, or we're saying, we don't want to see it on School Street, we don't want to see it near East Market and Mission, because right there are all the schools in that vicinity, the Thornton, the, you know, TR Polisita, Holy Angels, we're saying that, you know. But then, but then you go to the top of the hill, and you've got OLPH's school, see? So I guess what I'm, I'm asking all of you is, do, what do we want to recommend? Do we want to recommend a certain amount of distance? Or do we want to say, look, we don't, we do not recommend you be on School Street where the kids walk? We are not recommending East Market and, or Hillside because you're near the school? Or are we saying it needs to be so many feet? That's, that's kind of where, I'm sorry, where I'm trying to understand what we want to say as a, as a commission. Rick?
One of them's fine with me.
Velba?
I mean, I do, I see Ray's point that if you were to increase the radius, then you're gonna, you're not gonna be able to offer commercial space for cannabis. And so I feel like the happy meeting is, you know, omitting like School Street, and I believe you were saying at the intersection of San Pedro where it's Holy Angels is, is that the other one?
Well, that's, that would be East Market, because what I noticed that was East Market and Mission Street, but then Hillside is right next to three different schools, you know.
Looking at the map, and it doesn't really, the six hundred feet doesn't overlay that, the proposed site for four C. Do you have the map? Yeah.
It's right there.
So the Hillside one that you're referring to is four C, right? So I feel like that, four B and, and the one above four A, I feel is more concerning to me, because the six hundred.
Yeah.
Overlays those areas. And then those two should, a minimum should be omitted. That's my opinion.
Say again, Velba.
I would, I would recommend that four A and four B be omitted.
Thank you.
The overlay six hundred, I understand. The overlay 600, I understand it's the storefront age, but, you know, if we're not going to propose increasing the radius, then I would propose omitting at a minimum those two locations.
And, and can Michael or, Michael, can you reiterate? Because I see it's West Smokey, that's Jefferson High School. 4A would be, that's Jefferson High School, right? And then we're looking and 4B, I'm just trying to see the names of the street. Because three would be Janupur Sarah, is that correct? Three?
This is Sullivan, Unit Pur Sarah, yes.
Right, right. So, so I agree with Velba with regards to 4A, because that's the whole thing is school street. And then 4B, that would be, that would be Comus School?
Holy Angels.
Holy Angels.
Holy Angels. But not just Holy Angels, but what about, you know, TR Polisita and, and Thornton?
Thornton is 36, this green area.
Got it.
36 and Polisita is 37.
Perfect. Okay, good. So the only other concern, because we have such a high density of, we're just talking schools, is 4C, is that Hillside then?
This is.
Yeah.
That's Hillside. Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm going to throw out there, I, I'm going to throw out 4A, 4B, and 4C, that, that there's just too many schools and too many kids, and it's highly populated with residential. You know, we do have sporadic stores and things, but we're talking a lot of kids, we're talking a lot of youth. And, you know, this is for 21 and older, so.
I think you make a great point, Teresa. If you're going to exclude 4A and 4B.
You've got to do 4C.
You've got to do 4C, yeah.
Yeah, and then we leave everything else alone, and that would be our recommendation. Then we will leave the bumper at 600 feet. Do we all agree?
I agree.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, Michael, if you put the faces back, thank you for the map. Thank you. Very good. So we, we voted to close the public hearing. We've discussed our, sorry, I didn't write it down, 3A, I'm sorry, what are my, what are my letters again?
4A, B, and C.
Okay, so 4A, 4B, 4C, we, we asked that there be, those locations be removed from choice of, of stores. And so if we did that, how would you like me, that would be our condition of approval, right?
Will we do a motion?
No, it's a recommendation to the city.
A recommendation. Okay, so may we do a vote on, I guess we should do a vote on that. So do I have a motion to recommend to the city council that we remove 3, I'm sorry, 4A, 4B, and 4C out of the choices of store locations? Very good. Second, anybody?
Second.
All right, sounds like a plan. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, excellent. So with that, with that recommendation, can I now have a motion to adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report of September 1st, 2020? That wouldn't hurt what we just said. Is it, Tatum?
Mike, are there any finding, findings that would conflict with the recommendations proposed by council?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if I can have a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Very well, very good. Do I have a motion to affirm the environmental assessment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, very good. And I wrote all over my paper, sorry, guys, let me see if I could read this. So we would need a motion to recommend approval of use permit. Wait a second. No, I'm, I'm in the right place. That's right. Okay, use permit UPR 1220 014817, subject to the conditions and outline in the staff report of February 2nd, 2021.
It's a zone change.
Okay, this is, sorry. It's a zone change, Z, thank you, everybody, ZC 012114846.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need a roll call.
Here we go. Tatum?
No, I got it. Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Proano?
Aye. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. So at this point, I think we're, we are moving, we've moved our reorganization of the planning commissioners. Are we okay with that at this point?
Sure.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
How about I nominate Ray Satori to be the chair?
I think that's an excellent idea. I second that.
Call for the vote.
Okay, let's have a vote.
Is a roll call?
Is a roll call, okay.
Yes.
Sorry. Just take your notes. Crump?
Yes.
Pacheco?
Yes.
Satori?
Upstein.
Villanueva? Proano?
Yes. Excellent. Okay, do we need to vote for a vice chair?
We do.
Very good. So we're looking at a vice chair. I would like to recommend, oh geez, maybe not, oh, I'd like to recommend everybody, but, you know, at this point, I'd like to recommend, shoot, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm having a hard time. I'm sorry, because you guys are all great. I'd like to recommend Velba.
Good.
Good.
I second that.
Does anyone else want to recommend anyone else?
No.
I call for the vote.
Okay, let's do it.
Right. Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes.
Villanueva?
Upstein?
Hi. May I, may I just take a moment? I just want to say, this, this has been a group effort, you know, when I kind of veered to the wrong side, you guys pulled me in and reminded me like you did today, and, and I just want to say that it's been my sincere honor chairing this committee, and I look forward to, you know, the next steps that we work together as, you know, as we work together for the community. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your support to me as I chaired, and it was my honor to, to do so. So thank you.
Well, we thank you for your service.
You did a great job. You did a wonderful job in spite of the pandemic, you know, we did a lot of things. So I, I really bow to you and congratulate you for the things that we have done.
Thank you.
And Velba, be sure to be present, because you might be acting once in a while, so.
As soon as this pandemic's up, she's catching a plane. But I also want to say, Gary, it was a hard toss-up, I'm telling you, 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 you know, I'm just watching you grow by leaps and bounds, and I just think that as we go, the next round, I think, you know, you'll be there. And Rick? Thank you. Thank you.
No problem, it's okay. And also, I would like to give also my, my, my highest respect to the staff, Tatum, Michael, Kelly, and the rest of the staff, for, in spite of the pandemic, that we were able to get a lot of things done in the city. And to me, that's a good achievement for everybody in the city, so, well, in good hands, so I congratulate everybody.
Here, here.
City of Daly City. Thank you very much.
It is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
For you guys, absolutely. Well, at this time, I think it, it would be appropriate to, to adjourn, we have Black History Month coming up, we have many wonderful people in the city of Daly City, and I would just like to say, you know, during this pandemic, that I know it's been very difficult for each and every one of us and, you know, our places of home and work and such. And so I think if you guys don't mind, if we can adjourn in memory of just everyone who has passed away for the families that have had lost their loved ones and having to deal with that loss.